Best tickets on the board.
Yeah, I had to pay my taxes. Whoa. I suggest I would ever see you. I got a UK shirt and a UK hat.
You're gonna wear?
Our for our courtesy of him.
No, I'll take pictures.
You know, that's what I was saying, but. But we're, we're.
I extended twenty days, been long days.
We are actually.
So. Is the article?
You're not here today? Yeah.
Good. Today, well, if it's out late, I'm behind on the internet.
I seen that article we put in there.
Do you have a name, right, or Solomon?
I have no ideas. What you gave me.
Don't name Michael Solomon.
Well, okay.
You find that. And you're paying them a bar she.
I see.
What?
I need some help and a coffee. Oh. Oh.
Right.
That's okay.
Let me follow.
No.
They're all good. Everything is good. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Walking along.
Do you have a running copy of that? Yeah.
I just wanna. You may, I mean, you may think mine, but I would just, just like if you write something, it won't be changed.
I highlighted those at the time that I was in the building. Yeah, 'cause I was like, I was still a mountain, I was putting the city where it meant, and I'm like, I don't have a representation of all these, and then you know, it's just.
I read it.
Did you get, did you get? To say during my.
One forty-five.
Yes. I have four of them already. I don't give.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, so that we can meet. That's twenty-two to two all day, and I want that to. That would be something. Because there are like. You have to get to a place. And aren't to get to a place.
The name would have to. Oh.
Oh, wow.
The hours. Draft come from the hills. He said, like, you will air like, you are going to be, you know, one day you're mine.
I wasn't. How did you tell me?
Sure, maybe this box could fix it, but that's not. We have a number. Let's make those things. Go your way.
Matter of fact, me and your friend, that's what I mean, the job. Oh, I got that. So.
New York.
Yeah. From there. I was.
Oh, I just, I mean, I would feel like.
So we have a report. It's from the precinct. Draw that off. Oh, that's all okay. Shit up there, not that.
But we used to come.
These are the spots. Wow. But. I thought it was me. Actually, we're supposed to.
How many?
Twenty years ago.
That's more than simple. Glad. Okay, it can, they will. That's also.
Yes.
Uh, who?
Count it.
You just. Where is going? Cut it by. All cut through you. You wish you could.
I said. I said, I'll be tired. Children, you can run. Well, get the bag.
You know, they just. Being busy. I told you. No, we have to go back. No, she take.
But it kept growing. I go, how'd you manage this to get that big?
We didn't.
So why do people plant stuff out of electric lines? Why, why, I mean, we didn't plant it. Dry under the electric line, they plant trees.
No, we didn't. That's all right, just cut them down.
It's like all those cedars they plant it. We're probably, they're only, they came on. It's like, oh, see, Roger keeps trimming those up, too, because we kept having shop.
Generally, at the end of the week. She's in it now. We're gonna have to trim. She should fit right.
Check the general.
General.
She has. She's talking. I'm not mad because it's a. Good, hurry.
How's the mercy?
It's good, it's solid.
Glad you know.
For you.
I didn't know. I didn't know you were.
In that tail.
That's why.
I think he said. I'm not getting. I'm gonna say. Come on, baby. I'm seeing.
My boss.
Her full list. Either way.
I'm sorry.
Here, take some spot here.
I want to make.
That's.
Did you get that? Close there.
I can see him. I'll show her. I got it. See really good. I got that for her. They were.
Right.
On the. Three times. You missed. Did you stop him? I'm looking. Todd. Correct. I think you need. What the fact. Your. Good. Just like.
Right. Right, it's the all around. Considerment. Yeah, it was.
How's.
Yeah, I got it.
Thirty-eight. Thirty-eight. You're. Thirty-eight. Seven months. Eight minutes. He's like thirteen, like right.
I thought it's more.
Shouldn't have been.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. She's bad. Yeah. Now, we plan her. We're not exactly. She's gonna be sent to the out. I almost say. I do.
Almost.
We did five of yours. Oh. I'm not even having much kids. Yeah. Come here. Can you fight some?
You're not below. Yes.
It's like. I think you saw.
I guess.
Oh, please.
Um. We share. That's. Were you happy?
All straight.
Location. Location forty. Okay.
Okay.
Who should be?
It was. Okay.
Right.
Sorry, I was.
I see why I told you.
I'm gonna listen to that.
Yeah, I wrote infection in the news. Yeah.
Good. Great for. And beat their first.
Great. Everybody. Everybody.
I'm going to use. To the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of, of business, gather hearts and our minds in the spirit of, of fairness, bright thought, and speech in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Then I got the change on the house. Grabbed fifteen hundred. About fifty. They asked on that. We changed that. Now, does anyone?
Oh. I think.
So. Yeah. Agreed, is whatever. P A N I L I S. Like, it's my.
I see what she do. What's your all three?
Very much. All three.
I do. Also, that one. Yes.
Yes, I'm good.
Amy just got back from the vacation. She'll be right here a few minutes. Uh, on the apartment heads, uh, Amy called, he was just got home from video. So he, uh, went ahead and gave her, named Chrissy. Uh, honor number two for the regular reading, you see, that day on the art, uh, uniform, which is the E P P. That's just what you all asked about, and I've gotten. And the shows. He does have already paid for his coats and pants back there, but he just hasn't gotten them. So. There. So, yes, I guess we have to care about. About this. Right, any questions on that? None. That's fine, we'll like step forward.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcome. Here. Uh, couple of things, uh. Make me look, uh. First thing, I promoted Ray Gallant to sergeant, patrol sergeant each week. Um, we needed a second, someone to take care of business when I'm not around, and I think Ray will do a fine job. He's, uh, the obvious as was right. So. I just speak about that to be once, or, uh. We actually tested two people, but, uh, the other one was staying dropped, and the other one was, uh, Ray Gallant. And, uh, Ray's my uncle, so. Ray's mad, though. Yeah. Also, we started working on, uh, the, uh, licenses, ten out letters, one letters and things. Um, I don't know what one call so far, uh, just, you know, the hours are playing over. We're gonna, I'm just finding it's kind of, so we have to keep, you know, keep sending out, keep, keep people aware of what's going on, so we had, we've been trying to do that. Uh, we've also been trying to work on the, uh, uh, bureau problems. Uh, we've been working a little of the sheriff's office, and we've accomplished a few this week, so. Sure, work on that.
To go ahead and kinda touch on, thanks for what Greg's up there, um, the parking citations. We done the notice, we put it in the paper, um, we're not getting any calls on it, but I can't. The old employees that kept track of all this had the list of everything that ever had, had the citations that went all out. I've not been able to locate that yet, to be able to notify people by mail, let them know. So I don't know if you guys maybe want to visit another way.
Are, are we issuing parking tickets already, or?
Uh, they have started with parking ticket shit, because if the books aren't done.
Yeah.
They're doing the code enforcement letters.
What's.
The citation books.
Yeah, there's.
Parking books.
Yeah. I know. That's what I want, I'm like, it's been, um, months, but.
Well, they wanna, they did changes. Ray just changes on. Send them off, and they've been changed, and I mean, just last time I talked to you all, that's when they had finally went for the final, but I mean, I don't know how long it takes them to print, but they haven't come back, because there will be a big binder book, this other thing. So those are coming, but I'm talking about the old citations that we had done, and everybody wanted to give them the chance to appeal those citations, but I don't know if y'all want to maybe do something different. And maybe restate that motion, that is, those people call and wanna hear, do you just wanna waive that fee if people had paid it? I mean, some people didn't pay it, so as far as, I mean, just let those go, because the citations were wrong.
Yeah, the citations were wrong.
Right. So, I mean, do we even need to go to the process if they do call me, have an hearing, or just waive it, like Vinnie Johnson had done for some people when they requested a waiver, and he just waived that fee and it was done? But some people did pay, so maybe if they call me, then you all can just say, just waive it, and if they had paid, it would be back. I don't know how you all wanna go about that, but no one's contacted me. It's where it is, but I can't find an official list of everything that's cited back then.
Where was that housed? Where it was housed, that was?
Place department under the old admin, but that's been redone, and now it's got a new one, so I don't know. I mean, I can, I'm still looking, I'm not gonna say, I've got my, I can still try to find, see if they can get it back, but that's gonna take some time to do that, I'm just trying to figure out. What do you all wanna do with people that were.
Certainly, all the universal.
And that I can find, because I can go back through my payables where we took in money, or, you know, receivable, if I can find where somebody had paid and know that they were due backs. You know what I mean, and just do that on our end, but I don't know how long. Just inevitably, I mean, just let it go, I don't know.
So it wasn't that one on the.
On that, there is, but like I'm saying, nobody's contacted, nobody's sent anything at this point, so are you all, okay, we're just saying it's done? Or how do y'all wanna handle those people?
Friday, Friday, Tuesday.
Uh.
Friday, five o'clock, and. Yeah, this Friday.
Oh, I see.
So.
Okay.
Then we have new ones, correct?
Yes, they are correct. Yes. They will be. As soon as they get.
Who's, is there certain frame company working on?
Yeah, it's classic frame, so we've always used. So. I can call and get an estimated date on it.
I can imagine being more than a month.
Yeah. They send emails, and it was, I mean, they had a lot of confusion and stuff, and they would send us all the books to make sure that it's right before they printed them, so with a lot of group process, but I'll give an estimated date to see if they got something. I know she just sent an email today with the price and stuff, she told us what it was, but I don't know about the date that I can find out. See how close those are.
I'm not saying that, so we are issuing the nuisance letter, though.
They started with. Those stuffs, yeah.
Have there been any, um, any issues reported yet, that, or just based on?
I think he said one.
Have you issued out?
But he said people weren't reading it out.
Maybe issues, uh, there was, there was two issued last week, and I followed up on those today, and those two people have made great progress in there, so I granted them a sudden day extension. Okay. The three, there was three issued yesterday, I gave them, three issued yesterday, and I'll follow up on them next, next Tuesday.
I don't know the places that Brian Thompson was talking about, but he said after this, a letter going out about things, that he's noticed some places.
Notice one.
So.
Do you only have one officer that gives out these citations, just you?
Well, I mean, I go around and get the addresses, and then, like, yesterday I wasn't here, but I had Greg had someone else handle it with them.
But you make the decisions on.
And, uh, your neighbor's on the list.
I was fixing to say, that should have been.
Well, there's worse.
You know, back on that classic frame, we do have one booklet that, I mean, they sent us that was right, that we told them to go and print, I guess. You could take that and start writing the parking ticket with it, I mean, it's gonna be exactly.
I would have just waited.
Just wait till the others.
It should have taken no more than a couple weeks.
It was a sample. It's what it is.
What would be wrong with using the book if you've got one?
If, that's on the form user. That's in the form. The number. Yeah, like, start with the one. So, yeah, start with the one or. When they're numbered, I'm not really sure they're consistent.
There's some streets. And there's some that can.
Is there a way to add, um, into your report somehow, what, how many you're issuing?
I think we. We probably can, I'll tell you about this before here, we've, we've had issues with, uh, CAD system. Those numbers are probably not even close to being right, a lot of them, well, I don't think it's the checks, a lot of the checks aren't gonna be right, because the CAD system's messed up, like, or checking with that, I mean.
Okay.
They don't actually know what it's gonna be.
Just trying to think of some checks and balances, so that we know that they're actually being written, and then.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll definitely.
I don't wanna make extra work for you guys, but it's easy to just say, you know, we wrote how many this week, how many this week, you know, so that way we can easily see it.
Yeah, we should go.
It just, uh, that is kind of off topic, but when will the website be open for, I don't know, to bring another meeting?
No, I want it to.
When will that be open to submit, because I think a lot of the things.
I got an email today from the company that does the credit cards, and they said that they are ready to set up a phone conversation to get everything done, and they'll be ready for us to launch, so. I'll have a date, because she didn't send that email today. So I did give her a call, but she didn't answer, and I was playing phone type, but she did send that today, so that's the company that we have to wait on to have the link for the utility bills to be paid, so they sent that today, and she says they're ready. So as soon as we get that, I think our website people will be ready to go.
And it has a mission.
Because they're waiting on that.
It has a mission for both ends of that as well, right, long period of, it's been a mission.
Yeah, it's got a place where it'll go, like, they go on there and they put in their report, like, if they've got a complaint, they'll go straight to, right.
In the meantime, if a, if a person has a complaint, do they just call your office?
You call us.
Okay.
Now.
We call, we call.
Either way.
Okay.
Is there someone answering the phone, there's not nobody answering the phone about the city building twenty-four seven, I don't know.
We're not, not.
Just the voice. Uh, now on the letters being issued, I know, like, back four. Letter be issued, and then saved it in the file, and they get a state citation, that means we don't, uh, it goes to the court. I thought we were doing something differently. On that.
That's what I was in the impression that we're doing something differently, too, but I don't.
Yeah, that's not the way that we do it. We're actually, it's notice violation letters now. And then, if the people don't go to the clients, they'll, they'll get a code important citation. And if they don't get in the appliance, they can ask.
We have that, right, the citations for that?
They're kind of, we're waiting on.
Oh, that's, okay. They can use, we can use letters for that, I mean, it doesn't have to be a book, we can use, and like, city can use as letters for all that. Parking is just easier through books. But we're didn't want to do that. Letters until.
So we went on the next.
Mr. Duncan, what do you think's the right way to do about the old citations that were done, that were not done properly?
I wasn't aware that they weren't done properly.
Well.
We adopted.
They had no, on the tickets that was issued to people, there had no.
Due process.
We didn't tell them what they had to do, if they wanted, none of that was on there, so that's when everything got kind of stopped.
That's why we adopted, because we were.
And, yeah. Um, so what they wanted to do was make sure that we notified all those people, but now they know what they can do, but what ran into my issue is I don't know everybody that got them, because that was done. Old.
I, I think what you have done is perfect.
Just let it.
Let it out to the public for people to appeal, and if they don't, then we do more.
So even, like, people that pay, they would need to do an appeal to get the money back?
At least notify you through that question.
Okay. So then just let it go as of the seventeenth went, and I didn't get any?
That would be, my advice is that that would be lawful, if you do it that way, it's up to council if you wanna try to seek everyone out.
That deadline, that, that's a deadline, that's it. I mean, that is over. I mean, I can run it in the out again, people, I mean, I. I just go back to, I can't send items to everyone to kind of fish and test them, but people could dial it, or they get a utility bill. Yeah, we got two.
Rather than a utility bill.
We sent a copy, and there were a lot of them, sent a copy of that with bills.
Yeah.
So. And then let it be done, and we'll look forward. That's what I mean. Any other questions for Greg?
Good work. I do like the updates on the nuisance, I think that would be hugely helpful, be able to see that, uh, data.
I think that's something that, uh, that the people ask us frequently, as council members, and for us to be able to know that would be very important to say, yes, we're doing it, three more actually cited last week, two more cited this week.
I think, isn't this an Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you just have to add a line.
I mean, if you could just add a line, that would be something.
It's code enforcement.
Yeah.
Issue. Seven hundreds or something. Anybody else? Thank you, Greg.
I don't really have a lot of, usually I'll have a copy of my daddy sheets, just kind of wanna let you know that we're good. Uh, we have some issues that have, uh, big staffs. And, uh, yeah, one is retired, this month, it'd be last month. I think it's be at, it's. Might take a few retired. He's on vacation, he was only about to, end of month, he was last day.
You know when his last day is?
End of month, he was. No.
Well, I said it everywhere, too.
He said.
That's what I told you, his last day could be. That's what he said.
He tells me his check, his disability or retirement checks, anyway, so that's all.
Okay.
Thank you. You get the life number at work? No, put it there?
Oh, yeah, two of them.
Two.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. And the, the, the company, I called in like that, all the weekend, still, I'm trying to give them another call. Uh, they go through dispatch station, and they did work order to seal the way it's gonna.
Not their life insurance?
Uh, they, there's one not working a couple days, and I think they've got those.
This is not a direct question for you, but more of a question that it could be you eventually, I guess, now, the house on Park Street, the last meeting, we were holding it, it was taken care of, and it's still not down, at what point do we go in and we? Take action on it, make, make it good?
And Mr. Duncan, without talking to that lady, she probably called me back, and she said that they were such a.
Housework down.
Yes.
Well, there's a procedure we could go through to, to proceed towards demolition.
What do you do?
Can we do it?
Well, yeah, we voted like, well, I think that was even before, well, that was when all councils on there, proceed forward to get it removed.
I mean, if this company's gonna do it, this lady's gonna do it, I mean, I don't know what's the cause to proceed with that.
Well, I mean, you gotta follow, I mean, if we do it, you gotta follow me.
Right, there's a, there's a whole bunch of due process we have to, we're hoping to avoid. Right, there's a, there's a whole bunch of due process we have to, we're hoping to avoid that. For what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be avoided.
Cause she called me the other day and she said, I'm out of town, I'm sending somebody down to look at it, I said, it's falling down and it's bad. The only thing I thought about was if we just sent them a letter and let them know that we were.
That was supposed to get ready to start, I mean, in the old council, a letter was supposed to been sent, saying that we, you know, we've given them, you know, warnings and you know.
That was by the property, so I think it's switched hands back now, didn't it, to?
It is finished with foreclosure and someone by the fact.
Yeah, they may want it, they were supposed to tear it down first of January, she doesn't want, she said now it's something else, it needs to go before somebody gets hers. And we need to do something about it. Even the trees, we can fall off inside of it.
How did they do?
I mean, if they sent it before we started the.
They started finding, for some reason, they didn't have something, but they started finding.
I put a light, you know, it's like five hundred dollars.
How did they start that?
They started, they put a piece of paper on the, uh, on the roof.
Something like that can be started, maybe they have to start paying for it. I was gonna say, they knock it down, they're gonna come after us and then when they do, say, oh, you're the owner, here's the bill.
Couldn't that be sort of a hack, problem, like things may hurt?
Oh, absolutely, because outside it's falling down, you know.
How did, how did that stop?
And the children.
State people come in and decide it's.
Right, well, also too, the fire marshal, he's been here too, and he was still in there, and I told him, I told the court that she's not.
It's been all year?
Oh, yeah, it's been over a year, because, yeah, doesn't, doesn't ever get started. Yeah, it's been a year.
I said, I haven't pulled those down, it's hard, we saved you a bunch of money. That's what I, that was my answer.
No, where you can start writing citations and finding them, there is another provision for demolition, that's really good. But you can do both, you can start collecting. Um, we'll need to check and see if we're allowed to find the federal government.
We're saying, a second might trigger them to start.
That, that may.
Please not to. Maybe, maybe.
It definitely has required that, if you know, I mean, you know it's in violation, you can, you can skip the letter stage and go directly to the citation. There's language in the coding for, for that also, if you think it's imminent danger to life safety, then you can do self-help and go in there and start tearing it down. Uh, that may not hold up in court though, since we've let it go for a year and nobody's gotten hurt.
Well, I mean, but.
We've been looking.
Yeah, but with the recent weather and, and stuff, no winds, I see it rain more.
I agree with you, I drove, I drove by it tonight, it looks worse, way worse than it ever had.
Yes.
I'm surprised.
That's imminent danger.
I heard it said all the citations are on it.
You haven't got, it wasn't looking for it before, I don't know if it was in a danger zone.
I'm not saying it wouldn't hold up in court, but the longer we wait, it looks like it was imminent danger. But I think we can make a good case that it's got worse and now it's imminent danger.
Well, I mean, we had to give a proper timing for the foreclosure process and not being able to contact the proper owners.
One delay after the other and.
I'd say side on it.
Retire it.
It wasn't that we didn't want it, or that we've been after and we get it being put off by the legal system.
That's right.
Greg, you might get with the contact information that she has on the.
So, violate a Donald Trump, well.
Start there, and they might get that, they might go ahead.
Might say you have the property to do it.
And then you can go in there and claim it.
No, she don't do that, because I told her that there was somebody who was interested in the property and she said, no, we'll take care of it ourselves. And I said, you need to do something with it now, like it's getting worse, it's worse than it was when you were down there in December.
I have had two of these in other cities and typically they wait for the city to do something, make sure you play lean on it, and then you wait for it to sell, which, who knows if it ever will, to get your lien taken care of.
It's probably, it'll take more than it does, when properties work, this is the build, is the property being able to build more, build new organs and stuff, is, is it wide enough and just been up in there?
No.
So, you're probably wondering, waiting up here, what can do with it or something.
Right, let's just do stories.
I might say they might, you know, to the city, for the city, instead of just out here, the city itself.
We'll press hard on, I think code enforcement's a good place to start, but you play the farmers and all that stuff to be, to be, you know, if they say you owe them due year or whatever, so.
Why can't the fire department, do you know that has or anything? Something, that's right.
Sorry, they don't want to say.
They will, typically they won't, if they think it's by.
You have to, the house is a little, so, and why is it a game?
We'll bear our teeth and flex our muscles.
Try to.
Hopefully, I believe, we've been, no more Mr. Nice Guy.
I'd say by the next meeting, if we do not hear anything, then city needs to take action, go in and take it down themselves. It's been. And never. That's what I.
Did you call her already or?
I tried to, but it didn't work.
That's what she does, she, she won't answer, you have to kinda get different numbers to call her, because she won't answer the phone.
Who, who is it, the owner of the property or?
It's a lady who owns the property, it's a lady who, it's a lady who, it's the lady who's taking care of the property, that I've told her. Anything else for you? Anything else, Greg?
Any questions?
All right, good.
Um, I guess that was the question from, we're going, I don't know. Water loss, unknown loss, where, where's that number coming from? Unknown, unknown loss, we don't know like.
Forty percent, that's a lot.
Well, there's a lot of those aren't right, we don't put in, we don't damage on that one end, we don't put in residential, we don't put in industrial, there's nothing. Water fill, like water flow stations, I don't have those numbers to put in there, that's just what, that's what's left, or the fire department, I don't have theirs either.
Well. Well, I don't, uh, cause I know that on the CAD system, they're doing, they're tracking the water, cause I hear it call in, uh, up there at dispatch, so I didn't know. We need to, I guess, pinpoint where this water loss is and get that control until.
Well, how about the field stations, how much water do we know come out of there, do we have a, a?
There should be, we do have a station.
How many tokens, so?
I mean, that's what, you have to have, how much it uses, by how much tokens they sell, how much water we sell, just to people, I mean.
I mean, I could say how many tokens we sell, but I can also tell you that people say they put one token in and it runs forever, so you're not gonna have.
Me neither.
An accurate.
Oh.
Yeah, I went out myself and I tried to test the meters, I've got two sets of meters out there, both of them, they're all there, so. I've got the meter in the system, then I've got the computer that sells, sells it, the token. They don't, they don't correspond to each other. So, I mean, we can, we can read the meter, but, other than selling tokens, that's what the tokens will tell you almost, somewhat what you're, what you're selling out there. So, it's two hundred fifty on the token. You just kinda have to go back and, and watch, keep tracking the time to pull them, about two, two times a month there, and it depends on what kind of weather it's been to, or what sells the water.
You mean, I can give you number of water, but I mean, I don't, I don't know how you all factor the water loss, cause I mean, I would think your hydrants are gonna play into that, every time the fireplace, fires use that, they don't monitor that, so that's.
Teddy room, or has an Excel program, and they pull it out of the town, they ask how much water we treating, and they ask me how much chemicals we spend, and how much we spend in salaries and all that, and it does it itself. We don't do any of that.
What do you need to do that?
On that list, you'll see, the three things that are missing, you'll see what's missing on there, on the water loss. Is it residential, what's on there, residential, industrial?
Well, on the bottom here, I see for unknown loss, flow rate and cost, unknown loss, eleven thousand eight hundred and seven, eight hundred forty-seven gallons.
A billion.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's on like, uh.
Your own score is on what you.
Laws.
What are you, what that is.
Is that what you're talking about?
So you just need to know, like, monthly what we sell, residential, commercial, industrial, then you'll plug that in and that's gonna pay you?
Yeah, now it's a little better than I take that percentage down. Once I have everything in there, I can take it down, anyway.
Yeah, we'll never get anything with the water loss that high, and with it being unknown.
We also get the fire laws too, so you can get that all there, all up there, and I know Susan used to do something with that. I know, cause he puts something on there and you can pull it from his paperwork or something.
We tried that.
They shouldn't be tracking his loads.
Yeah, but it, it doesn't have it on there.
How do you use to fill up the load circuit?
It doesn't say it on there anywhere, how much they use, when they fill up over here, or when they fill up at a hydrant, it doesn't tell. We can do it here, when they fill up the jetter, we add that in there, but that's about it.
Well, yeah, the commercial on that side, I can give you those.
If you.
I still.
Yeah, if.
You know, that'll be, it'll be, it'll be, it'll go down, so. It'll go down, so.
Yeah, I get the numbers off that.
At forty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot, we're not, yeah, we're not a qualifier.
God seems to nice, but it was what we have on there now, at forty-eight percent, that was we add everything else into it, brings it down to, I think he said twenty or twenty-five. What you add every day, the way they used to do it.
So the issue with the fire department, is it because they're not tracked it, or is it because they don't give you accurate numbers?
Well, if they have a fire here in panel, they don't, they have no idea what makes it from Bushia, not that they had a fire in panel, they, they're not gonna know, how many, yeah, when they push up, they'll leave the stuff right out, this is the issue. Now, if they have panel fire, they fill up the trucks or something.
That's the way we know.
That's the way we, we get that.
So they didn't report that number to you? And you put that?
They, they used to, but I don't like.
Then, every time that payroll call me and say, you know, we filled up two trucks, and I'll say, okay.
Nobody goes in here, we.
They, uh, they call dispatch and we, uh, cause that's what.
I mean, it just sounds like it doesn't act, like if, if that paperwork can get to Dodge, you can put up an important number, we're not correct. So, can we just make that happen? He just send the reports, no? I mean. That would solve that problem.
I've got the reports that David sends us, but I don't, I don't know if that's all.
They're supposed to be.
And then quickly, they ask David to make sure that it's on there?
Well, we have a phone call.
I think we've done it, but yeah.
Can we ask someone again to make sure that it is on there?
Yes.
It just tells you, does kinda just be a patient, it's required to get that number.
Well, yeah, I mean, if there's a body that works, if he's applying stuff, anyway. And what should we know? I have a question, Don, in a late meeting, we were uncertain, um, if you were billing Griffins?
No.
No?
If they deliver, we have only billed to Griffins when they deliver. I'm being told that there is a contract that I mentioned, but I do not have this contract that signed. Ramona done, I'm not gonna mention her name, when she done billing years ago, she never billed them the way that he says this contract is, I can't read many minutes that say that this contract was approved. I can't, I designed contracts, so I'm thinking it was a contract that was maybe discussed, but never really fully through.
They have only.
Cause it was to be saying that they were gonna pay X amount of dollars, whether they delivered or not, and I can't, now, we billed them when they deliver and they leave a ticket, Don sent a few tickets for them, but to bill on this amount, that's in this contract that nobody does.
Did you go to back to two thousand and ten, two thousand and seven, or eight? Somewhere in that.
With three minutes?
With, uh, the, uh.
Yeah, we're talking about Griffins. So, there was a question about Griffins and Dark, uh, both, if we were billing them both, but we didn't know the answer, cause you weren't here, so that's why I brought it back up.
She bills them when they give.
Are the same. They're now, they're now. And hey, how long has it been since Griffins has brought it back over?
I think probably about a year.
About a year?
I do remember something about, back in two thousand and eight, we had some kind of thing, because, I don't know if it'd be in the minutes, like you said back then, but it was something.
That's what I love for, I agree, and I can't start this, their way, I can't contact Dark, and as they have a copy of this, or if it was just a handshake. No, I kind of agree with it, because we need a.
I can guarantee you that a couple minutes later, Griffins and Dark, they have this contract on here.
It's a.
Yeah, I mean, this, this contract was to say that they were gonna pay like thirty thousand, whether they delivered or not.
Well, so they're not gonna find that.
So, I mean.
I only send the bills, if they bring me a manifesto sheet, if I get a manifesto, I'll bill you, you don't bring anything besides.
When they delivered, we, she did.
Of all the discussions I've heard since I've been sitting here about this, the contract was sent to them, but it never got returned, signed, endorsed. And we get, where did this contract, or was not gotten it back, where's the contract, was not gotten it back, and that's been going on since I've said it.
Okay, so how about we make a new contract and, and set up and start going forward, and have it on file, I mean, what, how do we negotiate with Griffins and Dark Pro? Sounds like they're getting the best end of the deal here.
Well, I mean, I guess they've only delivered, what, once, you said it's not been a year since they've been in or?
Been a while, it's been, it's been about two, five or six weeks, that was now.
Usually when it rains, when it rains a whole lot, when they come.
But it's.
They have their own variators out there.
But what are you wanting to change, that contract aside, I mean, they get billed when they come in, just like Rocky and all that else, what, I mean, you all want a contract specifically that states, I mean, what more do you, are you looking for?
Well, I guess the answer to the question then is, we don't want they, yeah, when we visit, so there's not like a set contract in place.
Not that's been found yet, I'm not gonna say there's not, I have not seen the signed contract, I cannot locate, I have not had a chance to get ahold and call someone at Griffins to see if they've got a copy of it.
I mean, that was two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, and made this agreement that's been.
And like the.
It's gonna generate your contract and.
Yeah, I've got copies of one that's not signed, you know what I mean, I've got tons of copies.
So they were, they were agreeing to pay us X number of dollars regardless of what they brought.
But there's no official signed, notarized, and this is the done deal. Okay, so can we make a new official signed, notarized document and start going forward?
We can attempt that, but it sounds like they were interested in that contract, because they were bringing us a lot of stuff, my guess is they're not interested in paying us a flat fee, if they're not bringing us a lot of stuff. That doesn't mean we shouldn't, should've called.
They charge us, I think seven dollars and ninety-eight cents for that one.
They charged them, yeah, I don't know. I think Tommy had a special, they wanted to raise it. Nobody would do anything, I mean, last half.
And I, I are gonna fall under the pre-treatment stuff too, right, with your permits and stuff, so they're gonna have this new permit thing with the pre-treatment that we're gonna get.
Were they writing times? I hear, didn't they write anchors?
Yeah, it's gonna take sixty-three hundred gallons each time.
But wasn't.
And I believe they's on time.
Wasn't Griffin's stuff pretty much just almost pass-through stuff, it really wasn't?
It wasn't that bad, I mean, it really has a bottom, like I said, it wasn't bad, it got very, so, I don't think they had a lot of money either. It was like, I think, I wanna figure out sixty-three, sixty-four hundred gallons a lot. And I've seen them bringing from eight to ten, four of those today.
So how much are the other companies paying?
I'm telling you. Ridiculous, we charge Gotta Go, which is our other company, and S and E, we charged them forty-five dollars for that one.
But we're only charging.
But we charge Rocky, who is, brings Lee J, which is ten times as bad, costs us way more money to treat. We charged them fifteen dollars.
That's what I take, right? That's what we all saw.
I mean, we have a process.
We're actually losing a whole lot of money here, because we're having to spend more.
It actually costs us more money.
Who sets the rate?
To treat.
They were supposed to negotiate that contract. Six months, we gave them six months to decide on how they wanted it. And, uh, somebody made a motion to leave it to fifteen dollars a load. And, uh, for six months, and then after six months. The council was sitting, and Mr. Rumpy was supposed to get together and make up an agreement. They never did sign the contract.
I don't assume, I think Louis Kelly made the contract that went to Rocky, so we never know that.
No, Rocky come back in here that night, remember?
He came in person.
Yeah, yeah.
But Louis did a contract, because he used a contract that Griffins had, and he charged a few things in it.
Yeah, he did, but he never got signed, because when he come back in here, and he said, well, no. And he was still being looked at.
They wouldn't look at him.
They wanted to give them six months to, uh, come up with some kind of deal.
I think everybody, this should be a flat rate. If we're gonna charge the little guys forty-five dollars, that are bringing nothing that bothers us, that's gonna be, only that's hurting us.
Mr. Becken, I really don't understand why we have to have a contract with, Rocky when we don't with the others, why do we have to have a contract with them, when we don't with Gotta Go?
Just taking all this in, it sounds like, uh, you probably have a base price, and bigger company wanted a better deal, so they wanted a contract. You don't have to have a contract, you can set the rates and charge.
I mean, that's what we, they charge everybody else is forty-five dollars. And Rocky gets this special rate, and they're the one that cost the most too.
If they don't have a contract that's fifteen dollars, then. You can set the rates.
At, at the time, there wasn't so much the money as, when they was dumping down here. We didn't have no contract in case the spill went into the river. Whose job was it to clean it up, was it the city's? Or was it the, or was it Rocky? And that's, that's more, that's why they wanted a contract. And have all that put in, because EPA is gonna find somebody if that stuff goes into the river.
So who was liable?
Huh?
Who ended up being liable, Rocky?
That's, that's what we.
That still hasn't been.
That's what we wanted the contract for, and it kept being pushed and pushed, and, uh. Then they moved the dumpy sites. Farther out, but still going into the.
We had a spill, is it Gotta Go or S and E, one of, had a spill out here. Right about six months ago, something like that, and we cleaned it up, and charged them for us doing it.
Yes.
Wasn't a whole lot, it wasn't that big a deal, but, hey, Travis and I went out and did it. And we just charged them two hundred dollars for us to do it.
But if the EPA gets involved in it, it's gonna be more than two hundred dollars.
Two thousand dollars, yeah.
Now that you've adopted your sewer use ordinance, it's probably time to look at this. Because that sewer use ordinance is gonna mandate that we do things that we weren't doing before, and it's gonna cost more for us to process. So it, it's now time to look at, at all of your rates on these sorts of things.
So do we have to alert the companies that we, we build or misuse us, and let them know that we're evaluating our pricing, or like invite them, how does that start? Like, how can we start?
Depends on how fair you wanna be.
I was gonna say, they did when they done the last one.
If there's no contract, we're gonna, we've got nothing, we do whatever.
You, you set your rates based upon, uh, what you're putting into it?
If you don't make it five, you do whatever.
Take some work.
Take some work. That's how you only gain down road costs.
Now, we've got some getting done, so.
I think it's how you, it's not a bad level, you, we don't know that. I'd say one of the last tests, and one of the only one they charged, because it's not hard to shoot. But I think if you do it fifteen, I mean, I don't like you jumping out of a W at the third. I mean, even because, even if you had a lot, you was W, you know, you should've. But I think, what is it, every, every month, you're gonna get anything. Probably, that can hardly do nothing. He's what I pushed for the, the raise, and he's gonna, he'll catch it down, because anything will cost our money. At their Griffins. Fight it, you know, try to look for freedom.
So they might know what Griffins doing now, why they're not bringing as much as they used to?
They don't have as much rain, they got, they got their own pond that, that works itself, or the springtime that comes in big rain, they can't let it run over the creek, so they gotta get it out there. They can't let it get.
So they're detaining now, whereas they were before, they were just bringing during.
Right. I think at that time, we had more rains and make a handle, so they'd bring it to us to see it out. And that's why cleaner water.
When you all evaluate what the rate should be though, you need to have the information of what it costs you to treat and so on, and the different types of, of curers.
They had that one time, but that been since two thousand and nine, I think, when I'm looking, I'm trying to find the old agreement.
On with Rocky?
Aren't you, aren't you working on it now, how about on with your boss, when you work, when they give you that? For Rocky?
Well, didn't they come back, back then, and I swear I might be wrong, but I could, I didn't hear some kind of agreement, maybe it wasn't been signed, he might record it. I didn't know.
I'm not saying that's a lie, I just can't find a copy.
Because if they've hauled, their loads, they was gonna pay whatever was saved, they hauled that.
How's that towards your residential sewer, I mean, how's that rated?
What?
On, on your residential sewer rate, how does, how does that charge by?
What's that charge, sixteen, fifteen?
Sixteen, fifteen, a thousand?
Up to two thousand gallons, it doesn't change until under two thousand gallons.
So, we're, we're kinda paying more than they are?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And I wear this to those flubbers, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care, you can't, are you, I.
I said, they should start landing off store, this is what we charge at forty-five dollars, take it or leave it.
What is the tank on Gotta Go and the plane is? How big is that tank?
A tank, he told me, oh, sixty-three hundred, sixty-four hundred.
No, 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 on Gotta Go, how big is their tank?
Oh, they're only like, two, three thousand, four thousand. So, two thousand threes, and they're just different sized trucks, the mayor, small's two thousand, the mayor's three thousand, that's it. Eight hundred, huh?
Forty-five, so pretty much there, unless there's another.
But we again, we, uh, gotta take the treat.
Right, right. You mean, cost to now? She's sorry today. Everyone left the meeting.
She's looking great, they could be other.
See, this year, I've got plans. I personally had two, um, homeless issues. Uh, we, I know one's been transported, uh, or two, because we. We didn't, when you all had somebody though, at night, I didn't get the call, I didn't get a call on that, I didn't know. Yeah, uh. We're, I mean, you know, we're not even happily through the year, you know, so far we've got. Three or four, uh, five, last year, a housing tent. Uh, I get a call, and I have nowhere to put them, nowhere to take them, usually when they come in late at night, or they come homeless late at night. Uh, shelters close at nine, women, there's only two shelters that take women. Uh, one's in Covington, the other one's in Louisville, and they fill up quickly. And this has been an ongoing issue, um, cause of course, we're, we don't have resources to transport. And it's not safe for me to transport sometimes, you know, I mean, even with women, and, you know, it gets a little scary. But we just can't leave them out on the street either, you know. Because when somebody is desperate, is when they commit a crime, when somebody's desperate for survival, guaranteed, they're gonna break in your house for food. They're gonna steal, they're gonna get somebody's garbage, you know, when somebody's hungry, and, and they're cold, and they have no other resources, and there's nothing that they have, desperation sets out. And, you know, as I said, this has been going on for several years, I, you know, I don't have an exact count over the years.
Where do you set your tents out at?
Uh, well, we take them down, old car wash, fed them down to the river, wherever they, you know, wanna set a tent out at. Uh, you know, and they bring it back.
Who's property are you setting whose tents up at, and who's liable if something happens to that property? Buyer wise, vandalism wise, there has to be some liability there.
They sign a paper, I haven't, cause they get the equipment, they get this tent.
But I mean, the people's property, you're setting them up on somebody's personal property, correct? Even if it's down by the river, I mean, we used to land across the river too, I mean, if somebody set a tent up there, you know, that's my insurance, that's me, so who's liable?
Well, I'm getting that.
Is the property owner saying, okay?
I get them, you know, the materials, they sign a paper, what materials they're getting, what materials they're bringing back, and the repercussions if they don't bring it back. They don't hold me liable, because I'm the one that's giving them this stuff.
But that's just the tent, the whatever, right? I'm talking about the property, property.
And wherever they set it up, they cannot hold anybody else liable. And they sign this face paper. And I had very good success with my stuff returning, except for one, um, cause he went off on his medication, but, I mean, other than that, I, you know, they use it off. One night, two nights, bring it back, cause they found somewhere, it's just like the overnight. Instead of sleeping out on the streets or whatnot, you know, or, cause most of the businesses close between, you know, the resources, you know, close between four and five o'clock. They have nothing, so that's just a temporary solution until we get them help.
But are its property owners notified?
Yes.
That there's people that are being along the river?
I had permission, um, any property owner that they're set up on, they have permission to be there.
Does these people have children?
There's no houses around.
No, no, they have children.
Oh, if they have children, if they have children, I have a place for them just like that, if they have children, but no, they did not have children.
I'm sorry, what are we asking?
Uh, well, the thing is, is, uh, a temporary, I had a communications. Said that they would fundraise for a building for me, at, at, you know, for an overnight shelter. Um, but I had nowhere to put it. Idea was maybe put it in beyond the police department, I don't know. Um, but then I was, uh, I contacted, um. The pastor from Pum- Pumcrick, and we set up a meeting with him. And, of course, they're, they have the family practice.
Right.
Mm-hmm, okay. Uh, their problem is staffing. You know, of course, again, when you get a call nine o'clock at night. Is, you know, that's gonna be an issue of getting somebody to.
To talk to at Pumcrick? Jared Perkins at Pumcrick?
Uh, getting somebody to doctor, what they're doing, and go and, you know, you know, in the area, and stay with these people who are, you know, gonna be there overnight. That is one solution. Uh, and I said, well, instead of fundraising maybe for building, maybe fundraise for staff, and use, um, internship, you know, students, but again. If they come in at nine o'clock at night, they call their people, who's going to come in, you know, or is somebody gonna be able to fill that, you know, that's, that's gonna be, um, another issue. You know, of getting staff there for somebody who's gonna be there overnight. Sometimes they're just passing through, sometimes they're just dislocated citizens. Not last year, year before last, it's a whole, but pad, we're passing through here, sleeping at the park, it's found sleeping at the park. Um, this past year, most of them have been dislocated citizens. Dislocated means is they've been kicked out of their house, they were living somewhere, you know, we call it, you know, couch, couch sleepers. Um, because they sleep at different places, and they just, you know, run out of resources and they're out.
How many of these displacements or issues are related to, would you say, crime or theft, or just what you?
Now, that I couldn't tell you, um, locally? I don't, I, off the top of my head, with any of the people that I was, that I've helped, I don't know if any of them's been in trouble for that, I don't.
I know there's several going around town right now, asking for, reaching people in houses, and I'm not for sure if. There may be one of the ones that you temporarily.
No.
Housed.
No, you will never, uh, the only time, anybody has ever, ever noticed that any, uh, you know, any homeless person around here. Uh, is when I posted it up on Facebook on Thanksgiving, asking somebody to take me down their food, that's only time, and that's when it actually was brought to awareness, that there, we have homeless people here, and they're down there at the, um, garage.
Well, I'm talking.
But they have.
Talking door to door, I mean, that's not, not you, but the person.
They're not homeless people, and that's working with me now.
I think we have to rely on organizations and trained professionals to take care of the issue, I think, I don't think it can be a city, I don't think it can be a city, it's too much liability, I think it's staffing, training, I've talked about training a million times, that we want trained professionals.
Well, the overnight thing is, you know, the issue, is we don't have the resources, you know, luckily that one night, um, we was able to, we had two officers, we was able to get one transported out of here. And because it was not safe for me to drive them, you know, and I couldn't, my other resources that I had, nobody could come out and take them up. So as a city, it is because when we're sleeping on our streets, that is our responsibility, that is an issue. You know, uh, like I said, the one guy was out there in the park sleeping. Very nice dog, super athletic park. And then, I was able to call and, uh, uh, contacted my resource that I had. And they came down here and picked him up, took him to Cincinnati, and, you know, and he's, he's down the river, well, actually. But, I mean, there's, we, we have different types of homeless now.
April, I worked with a group up in Northern Kentucky that operates a soup kitchen. And during the winter months, they find that many of their patrons are homeless. And, of course, there are resources available in Kentucky's hotel rooms, what they do is they do fundraisers, they collect money, and give these people vouchers for hotel rooms, I don't know if there's anything like that, sleeping rooms or hotel rooms.
We have nothing here.
Like lodging houses or anything.
We have nothing here.
So, uh, what you might have to do, if you have the resources to be able to generate the funds, you may be able to use the voucher system. To get them transported up to a hotel.
Well, yeah, they're dead. At night, what do we have?
I don't know.
Nothing, we have nothing at night, that's the problem, they come in here.
The problem up there is, this, this group that I worked with, uh, had a benefactor, going through the money to either lease or buy a building. But no one, the governmental agency up there was willing to allow, from a zoning standpoint, a cold shelter. You know, if we have a city that is willing to help people. Uh, you know, if we have a city that is willing to help people, we will.
But on the twenty-seventh, uh, at very close, we know a lot of what we're, uh, in the back, you know, we're, he's busy, we're trying to come up with, um, solutions, um, and, and, I just said, but there, you know, a lot of this was staffing, you know? So, and that will be here, I texted Pussey today, um, you know, about if this was gonna be open, um, the twenty-seventh, at three o'clock here, um, to see what we can, um, work out and figure out a solution today, 'cause I said there, you know, at nighttime. I know one time, thankfully, they, I didn't have to go, but I have, you know, we got a call that there was two women, guess where I had them? I didn't have to, but the, the only option was in pool. I was gonna have to drop them two hours, take them to, because there's no option-
And would take them with the crisis center in Northern Kentucky?
It's not a crisis, that they just-
Sort of.
Yeah, they have to be, uh, with children, or they have to have a, in a domestic zone situation where they're getting crisis. Uh, the person-
The homeless that's somewhere in Covington.
They're with email.
There's all kinds of Cincinnati.
Yeah.
Are they, are they using drugs? Are they homeless because of drugs?
Um, a lot of times, yeah.
They're probably straight, they're perp, I don't know if you're aware of it?
Yeah, but, you know, we don't have the birth lines that pay for that.
Can we not use any funds that were generated to, to deal with transportation rather than an actual physical location, to get them to pay shelter in Cincinnati or Northern Kentucky?
It's possible.
Like, wouldn't that be a better use of our, 'cause that's where the resources, training, the, that's, that's where the training resources are, rather than housing here where we don't have-
'Cause we don't have-
We don't have the training resources, so we don't have to deal with those. Could we not redirect our funds and say, focus on transportation, to where we do have resources availability of that?
Yes, that's, that's an option.
'Cause we don't have, it's really to-
C A S A.
Yeah, talking to-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because, because Mariah was talking about the same situation that you're talking about. Because, if you remember, right, we were talking with her, Mariah, over there, trying to come up with a solution, she was supposed to come back and talk to you, myself, and the judge, and I haven't seen her.
That's me, it's, I, and, and, uh, they actually, they call me.
Okay, because she was one of the people, you know, everybody was down the other.
Yeah, they call me when there's somebody homeless, we call, and I come down and, uh, I talk with them, I see the needs are, and try to figure out what we can do to bring them there to, you know, um, come up with a, a temporary solution, you know, until they reach, uh, their goals and their, um, living minimum, and stuff like that, so. And like I said, the last one was, uh, it was late in the afternoon, you know, and that's when a lot of it happens, is late in the afternoon and evenings, you know, when you don't have the resources open, or, you know, transportation.
Do the shares department, can they help with the transport? Because I have this company here.
They can bear the transport to the jail.
This company here, I mean, I've, I've got transport to them.
I'll be there.
Yeah, I mean, that, they have to happen. Yes, absolutely.
I gue- I guess I just feel like our, our resources and how they're better utilized to be focused on transportation rather than the actual facilities, that we can't staff it, and that's a huge liability, even plenty of means-
It is major liability, 'cause if something must have happened within that building, you have another building on fire, and you have the liability within it. I, I mean, there's a lot there to play into as far as liability insurance, I mean, it's a lot.
You weren't enough losing it to your own.
That's right. Whether you signed a paper or not, somebody has to be liable for what's lost, and that calls back on the property owners. And I'm all for helping, and I'm, I'm, I'm like Alex, I think that there's organizations that we can look to, and-
Oh, there's lots of them, yes.
Plum Creek is, is a wonderful starting point, and if we could, maybe your social work group could work some help with them.
And, you know, like I said, getting a call at nine o'clock at night, at nine o'clock, e- everything is very limited, and that's gonna be, you know, one of the, the areas that are comments, um, is when it's late at night.
Is there a taxi cab service that will come here tonight?
There's one, isn't there?
I don't know.
You generate a voucher, voucher for-
A voucher for a taxi cab, there's two of them, over on- Really?
Yeah.
That's, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yes, I know, on this, Uber, you know, if the city provides voucher, and has Uber out, you know, somebody got slaughtered, he's gonna be responsible for that.
I guess I go back and get it. Well, I'm saying, we don't, we should really, I think, it would be a evolving process, we don't have to, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, could we partner with organizations who could set up a voucher system? Not, I'm not saying the city has to take responsibility for it, but I guess I'm saying to fix your personal issue with that, we need to work with an organization who can settle that. I, I think the city, the city needs to be handled off personally, um, that's my opinion on that situation. We just don't have the staffing resources or funds to do it, but I'm trying to get a solution that's not on us, I guess.
I tell you what, I've got something all for you now, but, I have a vacant house. I have a vacant house that you guys will fix up, you can have your little place for your, your people that are disabled, that need attention, as long as you all get rid of the dopeheads across the street.
Murder house.
We can't take their robbery.
Well-
Murder house. Give your results to them.
We don't, because I have a tiny house.
I can't fix my house, so I don't make any money.
Sorry.
But because of all the dopeheads across the street, you know?
I think that-
All of you, Phillip's all of you.
That's a, are you finished?
So it's twenty-seventh, please sit down here. Uh, because it's actually, uh, he, he does wanna talk to y'all about a health program that he's seen in Atlanta, that is pretty cool, uh, so.
Here?
Yes, here.
And who is it?
Jared Perkins.
Jared. And what day, what's, it is twenty-seventh, what's the day there? What day is it?
Monday, Monday.
All right. Now we're gonna draft a new policy.
This is just the first sample, this comes from K L C, okay? We've got to do a new policy, we've kind of talked about this in the last council meetings, so this is just kind of the first step. Um, like I said, this is from K L C, this is kind of their model. I started making the changes and putting in city hours and stuff, and I'm not gonna put in what I think all the places need to be going to, and let y'all talk into what you want, and then I can kind of finish it out, but just kind of look at it and see if this is kind of what you're thinking, if you want to align with what we want here.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, I sent you all the emails that you wanna, that's all. I need your copy. Some of this they always like to do with the company, and, you know, it always prevents you. So, like, so just kind of look at it, see if you see anything that stands out that you wanna change, I mean.
And you said that our facility is located out of Covington, correct?
No, they're in Cincinnati.
In Cincinnati.
We always say in Cincinnati, so, yeah, I'll get with them and see. I know K L C has mentioned, like, the company does like a random thing, so I wanna make sure that that company does it, and I have to-
Right.
And, and I like how that's stated in there too. Once you ran in, select this within thirty-five minutes, we will tell you.
It's, it's not ready.
To get to Cincinnati.
I just know this.
This is just grabbing, you know, look at it, if you got any good changes or anything you wanna put in it, you know?
Where do they come up with?
And then we'll have it ready by next council meeting.
Point oh-two, um, you cannot lower point oh-two.
Oh, I don't really understand.
Because, um-
Guess that's what they-
If you bring out wash, and your, uh, and your mouth are gonna blow to point oh-two.
You have a low for girls.
Yeah.
So you say you want me to, you know, little mouthwash, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because I did not know of that until they did the sixteen birthday party at the high school, and the state tricker made me wash my mouth with, and he was like, "You've been drinking." And I was like, "What?" And, and that's when I found out, and I was like, "No."
That's what he was mentioning to me, was like, "You've never been there." And, and, you know, this is, this is what they have, so just let, let me know.
So this isn't necessarily a concern, but after our last meeting, we did talk about kind of the agreement to put together like a volunteer, um, process, so, kind of, as it's been off of festival committee realigning, how we do the volunteer plan. Uh, I did send it all as a one-off email to each individual council member, and I did print out again tonight with some changes. Uh, I don't know if we want to, or have enough to discussion tonight, or want to go down that route, but I did print out a copy for everyone to look at, um, and if we wanna go through tonight, we can, it's, you're also all, wanna have a discussion. I think we'll probably see one copy, so here. So, this is not to take action tonight, it's more of a, let's talk through it and poke holes in it, and if we want to spend time with it, we can, but, um, after last meeting, I wanna follow up with what I agreed to take on. So, this is, um, a spinoff of things that I feel like that we need, and we talked about in meetings, we don't have the worker bees to execute and follow through with it. So, it's a two-pronged committee, and after last meeting, for those of you who are here, we talked about, um, kind of pausing and fucking the brakes on the festival committee, there's been no formal structure, there's been no, um, outline of what the volunteer structure should look like, is there any oversight of spending of funds by the city, or anything like that? So, created the volunteer collaborates, that created, and it's two-pronged. One is to focus on revitalization in town, which is grand opening, um, city cleanup, organizing volunteer cleanup days, block revitalization and recognizing, you know, yard of the month, the yard of the week, or block of the month, block of the week, and they take care of that. It's something that needs to be done, but it's not, we don't necessarily have the manpower in city office or in the council to do that every month, so can we get some volunteer residents to step up and take on those projects as subcommittees of the council? They give us recommendations, we give them recommendations, and they go out and do good things, because there's people in the community who want to do good things, but homeless, yeah, good things, something they're gonna take care of, homeless issue, yeah, there you go. Now we're making it.
I am.
So, and then on the other side, they also deal with special events, so taking care of our festival, festival events, um, and not just in scope of what we've done in the past, if they wanna do another festival or event that meets the needs of the city residents, they can take that on. So, this is just an idea starter, more than anything, um, and if we wanna redo it, we can, but it's two-pronged. Councilman Pitch noted that we maybe make it one big committee by the name, a special events committee, and then a separate revitalization committee, um, that can be done, we just need to outline that, what that structure looks like. So basically, um, it would work as a separate entity of ours, that the volunteers, the volunteer residents that down with, and I have, the outline that I have is just that any resident or representative of the partnering organizations may attend meetings to contribute. Uh, there should be no more than ten voting members, and as a body, each committee will consult the council for approval of expenditures and programming plans. Each voting member must be interviewed, scored, and selected, or appointed to serve as a term of two years, um, by which will serve on the special events committee, by which will serve on the revitalization committee, and each has a co-chair, each has, each section of the committee has co-chairs. There is an application process, which we need to create, and councilwoman Hurst, so we need to create a rubric for that, so creating a rubric for-
I need to apply.
Leave it to the teacher.
You have to at the school.
So, leave, you know, an application process, and the reason there is to stay in the game, so, we wanna encourage people to be involved in it, but also, you know, what do they have to bring to it? Is there volunteer service throughout the year they have to bring to it? And that's people who are currently on the vessel committee, and those who are not currently on, and that we're giving everybody, you know, the opportunity to, um, be involved. And we also said that there, there's not enough people who have applied for the committees that we can appoint based on, you know, the council's, council's thoughts. So, that's kind of the idea, and welcome any input, shooting holes in it, scrapping it, going out the window.
Now, what about the, like, this, we just went ahead and said, residents, now, there's some, like, members that are highly active in the city, you know, I mean, the Red Bee-
So, that's referring to voting members, so they actually have a vote in it, whereas it says in here that we encourage-
Right.
We encourage partnership with other organizations, they must part with other organizations on each event in some, in some capacity, but the actual voting process, if they vote on anything, or take it to the next level-
Oh, it's the city.
They have to be city residents.
Yeah.
The idea there is to encourage partnership, um, I did kind of plant some seeds with other organizations, in addition to other residents in the city who are interested in being involved in this, um, we've heard multiple people, tourism council wants to be involved, they can't necessarily take it on altogether, they don't have the manpower to do so, or they want to, um, but they wanna get involved with this, they can be a partnering organization of the volunteer committee, um, Donna Mattler wants to be very involved in it, she can't take it all, she'll have to be a portion of it, so how can we bring all these recruits in and make it happen? And it's not just special events, we, festivals are awesome, but can we also talk about other major needs, which I think this council all has agreed that are major needs, which are, you know, downtown revitalization, major thing we've been working on, can we get some volunteers in the city who are also passionate to help us make that happen? Grand opening, ribbon, ribbon cutting, we all, we all can't beat every single one of them, nor should we always be at every single one of them, I don't know if we need to always be there, but can they take care of that, and then communicate it to us, and, and take care of the logistics of it? Yard or block of the month, great opportunity to make it happen, um, they could be the ones voting and scoring and doing all that, all those good things. And then also organizing citywide cleanup days. So, that's kind of the scope of what I'm looking at. It does need somebody, we'll have to have some oversight of what that looks like, but I just wanted to get it in front of your all's faces to look at and to see what your thoughts were, so.
I'll hit.
Well, not downtown utilization?
So, uh, do you have any, any application already done yet?
I have not done that yet.
I am surprised, I'm very surprised.
Why not? Alex is just not typed up correctly, it's, it's, it's fair, it's my impression. I want one.
And it could be scaled up, down, around in different ways, it could be all one committee rather than multiple, but these are things that I think we have, we have able-bodied residents ready to make things happen, and they don't know where they plug in, and I think this can get some structure to it, and we'll talk about it. So, we still involve everybody who's already actively involved, we give them opportunity to be involved, but still-
And that's where on the structure, the additional organizations, the people, the county residents, they're there, they're not as-
And it also creates oversight, so anything that is done by the council, by the committee would have to come to present those back to council. And there's a meeting section where you can figure out how many times they meet, and when they push it back to council, and the plan is-
There's a accountability.
Accountability, yeah.
So can we, um, go ahead and organize the, the walls, and get an application process and we can all go in?
Yeah, I don't wanna do it this meeting, I don't wanna wait, next meeting, we get that application process, but I wanna do-
This, this block that you're talking about, you know, cleaning up this block and these red, would those, would they fall underneath the, uh, city's insurance, or, you know, like, somebody got hurt, would they, you know, fall underneath the city's insurance, or would they fall underneath their owner's insurance?
What we do to truck, paint and cut the town, like, tourism councils, they sign a waiver saying nobody's, that nobody's liable, so it's a volunteer waiver, same thing that you sign when they go to an event, like, they sign a way that there are volunteers, and there's not, it's not falling back on anybody else. And they gotta grab the one that we-
Yeah, that's- And then, you know, for people that has festivals and stuff like that, are they gonna use the city's insurance, or are they gonna use their own insurance?
This is still under the-
Well, I'm just like relay for life, okay? When you did your thing down there in the city, you was under your own insurance.
Right.
Right. And that's separate from-
If the city sanctions it, wouldn't they fall underneath city's insurance?
Just as it is right now.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I didn't, you know, I didn't know, you know, if the city says, "Oh, yeah, we, we sanction that," then you fall underneath the Kentucky legal suit insurance, should it happen by your own.
Am I pressing, that wouldn't change, I don't think it would change. So, again, I have welcome feedback for changes, this is by no means perfect for the way we use it, but, um-
Well, I was wanting to just see about telling the special meeting, you know, to like, read the files and, um, set up an application, I guess.
You were talking about subcommittee.
Yeah, um, July is approaching, we've been through it a lot.
Can I get an application process draw? You know, straight soon.
So do we need that motion to get things, go on getting started, designate certain people? What do we, what do we need to do?
Should we do the special meeting thing and then just have it set up to where that's what we're meeting about? And hash down everything voted on. I'll just send an email to you guys for the special meeting at work. Yes, did anyone sign the standing sheet to speak?
This, this hasn't got nothing to do with the festivals or anything, but a couple people asked me about, and I said, I'll bring it up to the council. Okay, we got an ordinance on parking on the sidewalks, okay? Now, Jolly's car lot down there, out in front, people comes up to look at the, their car and stuff and they're parked on the sidewalk, literally parked on the sidewalk. And one of the complaints was Houterson's daughter. Said when she comes up the street there, she can't see to pull out if there's a tractor coming or not.
Same at Barcelin 27 with the gas station, you cannot see.
And then the same thing at Perkins.
You cannot see to turn left, north, right.
Perkins, and we got a, a bigger problem because we got a far hybrid there at Jolly's car lot. And I don't know if we still have the law where you got to be a hundred feet away from a far hybrid where you're parking. Yeah, I mean, it's where it used to be, but his, his lot sits right there on our, on, on the city's property where the far hybrid is. Now, he's either, you know, if that, if that's still the law about being supposed to park so far away from a far hybrid. His car are parked right by the far hybrid. You can get to one side, but you can't get to the other side. If, you know, if there was a far there on the... They can't utilize that far.
Would that be a state?
Yeah.
Far, are we still on there? But I don't think it's started there a hundred feet.
Thinking how they park there when it was a dollar store.
Well, they, they wasn't there all the time. They pulled in, they got their business, and they pulled out.
Yep, they still were parked there.
Well, they, they, either they got, yeah, but what I'm saying though is this car parked there night and day.
Is it on the sidewalk?
It's a...
Actually on the sidewalk?
It's a grass, grassy spot, you know, where the far hybrid is. So I don't know if they, if the zoning has something to do with that or what. I can bring it up to the planning commissioner.
The parking they would, yes.
I don't know if we have to move the far hybrid somewhere. Because it's their, it's their property, I'm not saying that. It's a dollar store's property.
I think they're parked, parked some of them, and they're parked, not only are they parked like this, but this is what we get at the gas station. They're parked like this, parallel with the highway, and you can't see to get in and out of the street. And that's the only issue there is how they're parked there along there. Because you can't, there's no seat, and they're right on the right way.
And if you really did, probably, if you don't have enough area for a car, car lot.
For, some of those, yeah.
And then if you were to reach it in the water, you probably should have looked into that.
What?
It is...
Well, I'm just saying, I'm...
Right, no, relations off the car lot.
Well, I'm just, I'm not saying that anyway, but just people, when you pull to the car, car lot, look at car.
Right.
You got to park somewhere. You don't park on the sidewalk.
We might have all those cars out there.
Well, he, he could park in Tony's parking lot. Either that or change the ordinance.
Stay, it's Bill Chalmers. How many other businesses is he, is he opening up?
Well, after all the heck you give us on that slot over here, I can get him every chance I got.
Anyone else?
On that, part of the city where, you know, you say this is and I, I have no true proof.
I do. The one thing I have, of course, is that I just came from meeting with Brian Thompson and the joint planning commissioners about tourism council. A resounding thing they keep hearing in the interviews with their organizations is that people are meeting on the same night. So before I entertain a, any movement or anything, which will be interested in changing the date of a meeting to make it so that media, so that leaders of other entities could attend each other's meetings. There's not so much question.
Maybe it's a certainness, and the second physical court meeting needs the same night, correct? It's the last Tuesday. We meet the second Tuesday same as the first physical court meeting. I mean, right now, I have everything scheduled around this meeting to wear, but... And that changes about ordinance too.
No, I...
Right, you would have to have that ordinance published.
Do I know we talked about that? Multiple meetings will be able to have any actions, so I didn't know.
So do you have your, do you have your consent? Well, I mean, that can change. I have after-school stuff arranged right out to where. But that's just me. Are we talking about everyone or just... It would have to be...
It may be ordinance, we can change.
It would have to be ordinance. I think it used to be a different day.
The, the reason why I bring it up is in the five-year joint planning commission plan, it says multiple places try to alleviate multiple meetings of, of, meeting on the same night. And five years later, it still hasn't been done. So whether it's us or them that changes meetings, I think we do need this.
Yeah, I think that's something that the leaders need to get together.
I guess that's what I'm waiting for, but it's not done, so I'm wondering if we need to hear a team.
And they need to...
Maybe the festival court should have been discussed twice. So their first meeting should be different.
And they also do conference.
And, well, and that, think about it, when they were... Who did we originally have those meetings?
June.
It's always been Tuesday since I've been here. Oh, but, yeah, but was it on the first Tuesday? I don't, can't remember. We moved it.
What's wrong with the first Tuesday?
Yeah.
First Tuesday.
We moved it.
We did that. We flipped it. The first Tuesday, is that what it's called?
What is that for me?
I have no idea.
I don't want to be more busy than I am on Friday.
But it'll be on the first Monday. First Monday. But it'll be on the first Monday.
Bring up if you made a mistake instead of serving. Is he fired?
Does, I, I mean, Alex, she probably worked the farthest away. I mean, would that...
Alex seven, but I mean, I will do it if we need to do.
So what's wrong with the first one?
It's the date, right?
Right.
Is there something on the first Tuesday?
I just said we're getting Joe Feltin in the month, but...
Is that all about you?
I know, but you almost like... Maybe on Tuesday, but I'd be giving it to you.
Yeah, maybe throw some ideas around. Oh, I know, is there a way that we could maybe talk with Mayor Butler and Judge Detective to see if we can see what meetings are, so at least we can try to work that way.
Well, I know what it is, all right. I know what it is.
Right?
Davidson, Davidson's tonight, and then, you know, just get next Tuesday and the following Tuesday. But that Monday, they do conference, and then have the Monday that they're not meeting on that Tuesday, they also have conferences. So they meet like four times weekly. They do, they meet a lot, and they're on the Friday group, and they have a, they have a...
And I guess I'm just thinking like regular scheduled meeting with public would be attending. Because even if it's on an issue for our council right now, next council could be, and future issues. And if it's been an issue for five years, we haven't really needed a one-licency. It's kind of, kind of bad, so. We may just...
It's part of the five-year plan, and they're going to, they're going to make that too, so that's something, yeah, we're working on. It's into Joy, the survey.
I did not get a copy of the survey. I mean, I did, I did the survey.
The one that...
I didn't get the results.
It's online, I think. It's online.
It's online, like...
Yeah, I did the survey, but I didn't have the, yeah, it was the results.
I have, I have the results too.
Okay, I didn't think they...
I thought they weren't there. Anybody else? Anybody want to go home?
Not yet. Do we have any information on S O C S? Cause they have some January, they have some February, March.
We do. We have the, what's it called, Hug Mike? And it's making care of it. Also, too, we had a conference meeting either Thursday or Friday with Division of Water. They're supposed to do, so number, I can sit down and talk to them, just see what we can do and find all that. Also, too, when we did our special program, which we just finished, the permits were not, we were not finished. You are definitely, also, we're trying to find out what we're going to be allowing permits.
They can do, but they won't call Division of Water. They need help. They gave me a quote that's going to be like sixty-five hundred dollars when they finish these permits for us. But Division of Water, I can't need to kind of, like, somebody else and just get some. And I was like, I have a person that's familiar with these kind of permit, and it's going to be five hundred dollars. So that's what we do first. So I get to, I don't know, like, we're just having to go.
Whatever transpires with the world, the panacea of world water.
Well, Don said that the ladies still heard what they can't do, but I had talked to the CEO, and I talked to Don, and they told me that they could do it. He said instead of waiting for the S S, S S D S, if anything is broke, we should fix it, whether it's a five-dollar order or anything like that. So now we're have to go through, and right now, what has been fixed, and give them a list of everything that's been fixed, from hogs to, to the reservoir. To... Yeah.
Yeah, this is how, following with the agreed orders and learning.
They're redoing that too. But that'll be in a week to talk with.
Following all your family, we could get fined with you?
Yes.
We're hoping not. But, I mean, I'm hoping saving, I mean, we've stopped with G R W F from charging us sixty-five hundred dollars, so going down to five hundred, so we're, it's, we've kind of seen still on things, because we were kind of directed the wrong way. But now we've got this lady kind of helping us to tell us where we need to go. That's going to help us with...
This lady with whom?
She's with Division of Water today. So we can, I guess, save them, just kind of recruit.
Now, Diane, thank you. You, you said you, I guess, had a meeting in Frankfurt, or Dan told me he was in Frankfurt that way. What happened with that?
That what the... That's this. That's this. That's this. But they're not coming. We've got to wait another week, and that's... You know, color bodies.
We earn a lot of violations.
Yeah, we...
While not even that stuff, other stuff.
Yep.
There's a lot that is...
It would be helpful to know the follow-up from those meetings as they come out, so that we could be informed as possible.
Shoot at that little panel.
We could shoot papers.
You don't need papers. You type it up on email. You can get that way.
Well, we had papers after papers after papers, and certification was supposed, or certified letters. Folks come in and like get them, somebody else sign for them, and you never got the paperwork. So, yeah. We're working on it. So we have to know a whole lot more from that Friday. Those two are Friday. He said he had. That'll be, that'll be good for a better...
And still no answers on updates from the schools, the school board on how schools centers now?
I haven't heard anything else. They need this Thursday. That's all, I don't know.
Communicated all with school board. I've been trying to communicate with fire, and they don't talk. They won't.
I'm not saying anything where it's going to be final, but like selling anything. So I don't know.
I had to add, brought that up.
Well, they, last that the school board, it was proceeding on, but that's as far as I said, proceeding on, and they went and answered any of my questions.
The school board has their processes that they have to go through to buy and sell or whatever property. And ultimately, the use of land is going to be our cost. So I have to caution you all not to make public pronouncements.
And that, that's why I'm asking questions, because I want to know where we're at, so that when we do it, because they are getting questions from neighbors and that across the street.
You can say things like, the zoning is currently not compatible with what they want to do. You shouldn't say that we're against any rezoning to let them do what they want to do, because you all will have to make the final decision. So you're like the judge and the jury. If you drive by and look at that place close to you, you can tell it's going to take a ton of money to make it usable for what they're talking about.
They'll have to come through the planning commission first too.
Right.
Right, sure, yeah.
And do you know that they filed for a, the senior certificate of meeting?
Well, I think the, 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 should, should you post it or it's on? For a first, it should be online. I'm thinking maybe up tonight. I don't have it, I have it checked and stuff. Um, I think it's usually two days. They like to get it out, and it's usually online, and then we always get it out, so I'm not...
I'll start speaking, assign my friend. I know, I asked last two, three months, and I don't want to keep her in the room, but I would like to know if you possibly want to get my stuff back.
Yeah, you keep reading up. When you come in, how long ago was it when you come in and gave me your list?
A week ago. I think it's been five months.
But it was two weeks, maybe a week ago when you finally come in and gave me, you were going to give me a list, and you didn't. You just told me what it was, and I still got one more employee to get his say of what's his.
Who, Conrad or Amy?
Amy. He's the other one that's got some things that are supposed to be his.
He did, he did.
So I want to get you anything. I need him to tell me what's his stuff. He's still up in there, and you just come the other day and told me, hey.
I understand that, man.
All right, we'll get it to you. I mean, I promise you, you'll get it back as soon as I can. But you just come in the other day, and we'll get it.
We were talking five months ago, man.
Well, that was, that was a board with everything, so...
I want to ask, why is Chrissy holding items to begin with?
I don't physically have them. I mean, I haven't seen them. I mean, I haven't touched them since they are been put away with paper taken. I just have, wanted to get the list of what's his, to make sure that we know. I don't even know that.
I only ask because you're answering the questions for it, and that seems a little bit strange to you.
No, I don't have them.
And what was the purpose of it?
I don't have them.
I don't know, there was nothing.
I was just going to get the list of what's what.
You will get it back, Peggy. You will get your stuff back.
I understand, I understand.
You will text him?
Huh?
You will text too?
I don't, I don't pay attention to them, they're not mine. Oh, I didn't come to write it, man. I just thought, I didn't know what was the purpose of, of mine. What was the purpose of doing it?
And we're going to, I was looking into all that.
I just see only been five months, and I don't think I've been very, I've been very patient about this.
You could just stop looking at it.
You could just stop this.
It's like, don't write us a statement, and then we're going to write a document.
That way nobody is... So Alex, Mr. Alex, maybe is there a better way that this needs to be handled, since I don't know what...
He's already told you I'll give him back.
He didn't know the situation either, and I told him, and then he said what we were doing was correct by getting the information from you, what is yours, and the other employee what's his, and then we would give him back.
Well, once everybody complies with that, they'll give it right back.
Right.
Unless it's a contest over some two people challenging, oh, the same items, then there'll be a problem.
Okay, I understand that, sir, but I never did get to answer what was the purpose of coming out and handing it off.
I can't answer that, but I think you need to take that up with the mayor.
I think if you come to my office and said I was talking to him.
Now, do that would be a good idea.
I think if you don't want to, why do you?
I'm not trying, man. I'm not trying to work with you, though. I think, I think I've been very patient, my friends. And I don't think I've been in any way rude. I just, I don't... I just, I don't think I should at least know what is going on, especially when you come out and you, you all do it, and no one tells us, I'm, we're gone.
Like I said, if you come into my office, we'll sit down and we will talk. It's all you gotta do.
So it tells to me, like, since this has been going on for three months, is that at this point, because Mr. Donovan said give it back, and Hank's requested it three times, that at this point, we're waiting for Andy to give a report of...
Andy's been talking, you know, you go up and talk to him, he'd be here first anymore.
Because I'd like to, I, I would just like this to be resolved before next month, because this is crazy.
And it will, like, instead of just coming...
Andy needs to give a report of what the items are, and then...
He already got it, that's all he's got, he doesn't...
And then we're done.
We need to write it down, then have a... Yeah.
Will you tell Andy that he needs to write his things down, turn it...
I have a problem. I still would like now, but then, no, what was the purpose of it?
Okay, so I remember saying that she needs you to come in and talk to her.
Yes, ma'am.
So that answers that question.
Yes, ma'am.
Andy's gonna give a report, you're gonna go talk to my lawn.
Yes, ma'am.
We're done?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we'll call Andy too, just so that's not hanging in line in the essence of...
Okay.
Yeah, we should, he gets it.
Since we've been sitting here for three months, I think...
Peter. I know. I'm... I have questions, can I?